I'd call to order the regular session of the county commission meeting.
Actually, it's a meeting.
That's okay. I love my lawyer, so I want to remember that one. So we are calling this meeting to order and this is our regular session of Commissioner Seven, Commissioner Buckner, would you leave some prayer, please?
My most gracious love, Father, thank thee, Father, many blessings thee give us in days of our life, Father. Thank you, Father, for this county that we live in, that we're able to conduct the business of this county, that we might be able to have a better place to live. Father, we ask thee to be with those that are ashamed to live in this way, be thy will, Father, give them the things that they need, these things we have to practice.
Man, for heaven's sake, for the plague.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ben Clark, roll call.
Yes, sir. Mr. Simpkins.
Here.
Mr. Ledger.
Here.
Mr. McElwain.
Here.
Mr. Beatty.
Here.
Mr. Dawson.
Here.
Ms. Spicer.
Here.
Mr. Buckner.
Here.
Mr. Britt.
Here.
Mr. Beatty.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Mr. Grove.
Here.
Ms. Grant. Oh, she's not here.
Thank you. First order of business is approval of the minutes from the May twentieth, two thousand twenty-four session to have a motion. Motion by Commissioner Petty, second by Commissioner McElwain. Any questions or discussions? Hearing none. All in favor of voting stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Item number two is public comments. We didn't have anyone sign up for public comments. From looks of it, I don't think there's anybody there we want to hear from anyway. So nothing personal, just lining up people. Number three is committee reports or any committees to report tonight. Hearing none. First item of business, the fourth item of business, appointments, library board of trustees, appoint a second three-year term to Ms. Dana Ramsey, Ms. Starmore, Ms. Angela Redden on the library board of trust. Open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Brett, second by Commissioner Petty. Any questions or discussions? Hearing none. All in favor of voting stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Item number two, under appointments, sanitation board, the reappointment of Mr. Ken Nave. He's been on there since origination and he is the chairman. Open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Spicer, second by Commissioner Simpkins. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of voting stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Resolutions appropriations to various departments, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five county budget. You see before you the resolution appropriations for various funds, departments, institutions, offices and agencies of Dixon County, Tennessee for the year beginning July one, ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. It is by law put in the form you see before you in this resolution, this three-page resolution. I'll be glad to walk through any of this you would like. Or I know you also have budgets, not only your general fund budget, but you have some other budgets that you presented over time. I was already been told you may have a question on one of them, but I'd like to open the floor for any questions you have may have for me or Mr. Hall. The one budget in particular, I've already been asked a question on before the meeting started, was the one seventy-one budget, is the capital funds budget. You'll notice in there that there's quite a number of items that are projects we're working on. Those, many of those were approved in last year's budget, but the money was not spent, so they're rolling forward. One of them is like the new planning and zoning building that they'll be turning dirt on this week next door. The others were the improvement of the historic courthouse and of the jailer's house, and so there several are listed like that. That's as I respectfully call that Joe Biden money, because if you look at the one seventy-one budget, there's no revenue lines in the one seventy-one budget, there's only expense lines. So when those projects are done, that money is gone. And as we had an agreement and discussion, when this Joe Biden money showed up. Three years ago, we started, we have not put any of that money into operations. We've done it all to improve buildings, because we know that money's going to go away and it won't come back. And I appreciate the discipline of the commission, the elected officials and the directors manage it that way, because our neighbors, many of our neighbors around it lived off this money. And they made, they paid payroll and did different things with it. Well, now the party's over and for those folks, it'll be over with on December of twenty-sixth. All that money has to be spent, it'll be gone. So the good thing that Dixon County's done with that is it's all gone to infrastructure. We paid very little funding out of it. We gave bonuses, you recall, at one time for all the folks that never left their post during COVID. The health department, sheriff's deputies, jailers, and a few other assorted people, but that was a one-time thank you bonus that y'all voted to give them. But as you see, everything else is a construction project that we've all talked about and been working on. In the other, the one-on-one budget, I think, you know, we've kind of gone over that general fund budget where we are. Is there any questions y'all have on any of that stuff? Because we're prepared to answer anything you have, certainly Mr. Hall is.
Whoever could take all that money and use it without having to raise taxes?
Excuse me now?
We couldn't use it in the general fund, no way, another to keep raising taxes?
Yes, you could. And then, but once you use it, then it's gone forever. Then we have to come back and raise taxes even more. So government money from the federal government, one-time money, one-time money from the state, it's almost like the heroin dealer. They like to give you the first and free, because you'll be buying it from then on.
Do you not think the country, I mean, the, what kind of outlook you've been on, ex-bankers, what do you think about the way that the country's going? Part of the need of equalization and everything, what's going on, you know, in the country? Does that want to make it a little bit more conservative? Maybe back off a little bit, freeze a few things, you know, keep them spending as much as we do? And after we, we, we got that figured out, that's, that's three million dollars in taxes you're going to raise?
About two point six.
Well, that's, ain't that sort of mind you, don't think we'll get cutting up out of our budget to make your decision?
Well, I prepared the budget and I'm very pleased the budget we did. It's your budget now. So any recommendations that you'd like to do, you can. We've, we made a decision fourteen years ago to quit living hand to mouth around here. We could eliminate every dollar, every penny we put into debt service tonight and not raise taxes. But then we're going to be in a situation that we inherited with trying to figure out how to pay for a jail and how to staff a jail. We've taken a long-term view of this on how we do our business. We could kick the can down the road, but it was commitment I made when I ran for office that we're not going to do that. We're going to solve our problems today. The political convenience is, is let's not raise taxes. We can live out of our debts or out of our fund balance. But the day you start that, just like you start at home, we're going to pay for our light bill and our groceries out of our savings account. You're going to have to continue to buy those things and buy more later on. We all know, and I'm about to get political, so let me step back down here. Don't be upset in the chair. As long as we elect people to go to Washington DC that have no financial discipline, this is the kind of budgets you're going to see in Dixon County government. When the federal government spends money as fast as they did to give us hyperinflation and. Trying to think the nice word, spend it frivolously, it puts us in this situation. When you put that much money in the economy at one time, you start needing five percent pay raises. Tires on vehicles start costing thirty-three percent more, more for fuel, more for insurance, more for the cost of heating and cooling your buildings, more for the cost of physical damage insurance. More for the cost of health insurance for your employees. So, I mean, I think the budget I put together with the help of Mr. Hall is a budget that keeps us moving forward. Am I excited about a property tax increase? Absolutely not. But it's done on a measured basis. But we can go back and again, it's the will of this commission, because I'll manage any budget you want to hand out. But as y'all all know, back when we had it several months ago, we were having the problem of paramedics, we had to make a hard decision to bite the bullet and take care of it. We also had to make a hard decision to take care of sheriff deputies, which I know some of you said out loud, you wanted the deputies to make more. There's a cost to it. There's not enough growth to do that. The other side of growth in this county and the other side of growth in Tennessee is the more growth you have, the more issues that come up. Yes, they pay more in taxes, but property tax in the unfortunate situation is one of the only ways to tax. Taxes, property tax in particular punish you from the standpoint, you're paying for growth at your homes and that other people are taking advantage of. If the state legislature gets some guts, they need to allow us to put all the counties in the state to put an impact fee for the people that are moving in here and the impact they're having, so we can charge them for it. We're charging for a home right now, a dollar a square foot. That's the same thing where we're charging over twenty years ago. A dollar a square foot on a fifteen hundred dollar square, on a fifteen hundred square foot house, that, what was the fifteen hundred square foot house? About seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars. When I was banking, that's what it was. That's a three hundred thousand dollar house now, but we're still collecting a dollar a square foot. So we're in all these situations where we are limited on what we can do by, by state government and with crazy, with unusual spending habits by that. So again, would I like a zero? Absolutely. I'm nearing retirement. I don't want to pay more in property tax, because I know my social security increases and my savings will not keep up with inflation. And when you get near retirement age, like you, like most, a lot of us are, you sixty-five years old and you're watching the federal government just literally take eight and nine percent of your retirement money away every year. That's unfortunate, but unfortunately, as we're left with the issue where we've got to solve it. So we can either keep the kind of quality government we want today, but to get the kind of savings, you want real savings to make a difference, that's not turn the air up to seventy-eight degrees or keeping the blinds down. You're talking about sending people home. And if that's, if that's the will of the commission, start making amendments, we can work them in and we can go forward with it. But we want a quality education system. We pay more than the minimum that we're required to on the BEP, now TESA, on our maintenance effort, because we want quality education. You want for your children, your grandchildren, we want for people that move into this community. So we can either do it the right way. A twelve percent tax increase, a twelve cent tax increase, basically from a dollar fifty-seven to a dollar sixty-nine, you're talking about seven percent over five years. You haven't raised property taxes in five years. So if you break seven percent down roughly, that's one point four percent a year. What else in this economy has only gone one point four percent a year since two thousand nineteen? I know the answer, nothing. Everything's gone up. So we can make tough decisions tonight and get this done, or we can kick the can down the road, take some money out of the left pocket and right pocket, and we'll be back here next year for the same thing. It's important to have political courage, moral courage to do the right thing. This budget is the right thing. I stand by. Thank you.
And I agree with you, Mayor. We're in tough times. Like you said, inflation is what it is. The only concern I have is not the building projects or anything. It's like I told Ms. Sutherland the other day, I think that during this time, and I think you understand, you know exactly what I'm saying, is adding additional personnel and services. Is my only concern, because it's a reoccurring expense, because the numbers ain't real. And I agree with everything the mayor says, we got to grow. But one day we either going to have to raise taxes real high, or we're going to start laying people off. And that's the only thing I'm saying.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner?
I just comment and ask you before the meeting, in comparison with other counties, where do we fall and what, what are they doing to keep their budgets going and their counties going compared to ours? And I'm not, not talking about counties like Williamson and that has sales tag. I'm talking about joining counties, Humphreys Hickman, Houston.
Yeah, they're all seeing the same issues we are and to different degrees. I think Hickman County, they started off their budget looking at ninety-seven property tax increase. They whittled it down to thirty percent. I don't have enough knowledge of what they've done and where they're getting their additional money from or their cuts, but again, they're taking out a fund balance, you know, for economic dip, absolutely. But you know, when your revenues are good, but you're right, Williamson County, the city of Clarksville is, even though they're having a reassessment, they're keeping their property tax rate the same. They're increasing their funding by that much. I'm not throwing people under the bus, because you asked a question, but the city of Dixon is not lower, has did not lower their property tax proportionally. They lowered it some, but not to what they could have had. I believe they were at seventy-seven cents, could have gone to fifty-five. I think they're around seventy. So all governments seeing the same problem, as long as inflation and hyperinflation and irresponsible spending is out there on the federal government level, there's a ripple effect to all of us.
Well, I don't think I, I don't think I meant, I mean, disrespect nobody, whatever I did. I look at myself in my business. If you make a note of a man speaking about hundreds of dollars, he'd be the fault, what do you do? Take away his stuff, right? Well, you take the people with the county inflation, whatever their sales tax goes, they pay more money every month. And, and they got no recourse. We sit over here, we raise taxes and take everything they got. They don't pay their taxes, we take their farms or their houses. See, and it's, it's just seem like to me it's unfair, you know, for us to do that. And that, and just like what you're talking about, what about impacts and a dollar a square foot. Why don't we raise it? What, to take care of that three million dollars? Raise, give them a two thousand on impact fee or, or three thousand on impact fee. I, I, I said a long time ago, do it five thousand, put it earmarked for the schools and bear deal. Be physically, you know, let's do some restraint instead of just sitting and saying, this is what we got to do. We don't have to do that. I mean, for sure. I could, there will be strewn out the tires and the tubes and everything in the world from my first term. And, and of course, I think sometimes I went to the extreme, but it's still, we need to look at it. I mean, you know, and I think you done, Mayor, I think you do the job. I really do. And I, I just, that's just my way of thinking, you know, when I, I pay my debts and, you know, and it's something I would, and then the interest rate, we're going to borrow the money, it's going to cost us, what, four, five percent? You know, so. I just think it ought to be a discussion, you know, some way or another, you know, solve it some other way.
Yes.
So I know we've had several conversations, me, you and Don, you know, I've talked a couple of times and. You know, I'm a small business owner. We've talked about that, you know, I mean, if you take our federal state and local taxes, we're paying over fifty percent, you know, and so. I'm in the NFIB, you know, we, I fight, you know, new taxes and, you know, we fund lobbyists to fight at the, at the state and federal level. For new taxes. And so, I mean, I've been struggling for a couple of weeks, like trying to figure out how to justify this. And I mean, because I'm preaching to them, I'm saying don't raise taxes and I'm sitting here fixing to raise taxes. And so I feel kind of like a hypocrite. But I've also, you know, we've talked through the budget. I've, I've spent some time on it and we talked about it, you know, and. I know in this budget, from what I can tell, you know, we're getting about one point two million dollars in new revenues without raising taxes. That's just our growth based on due to the growth. And our salaries, you know, if we give a five percent, you know, increase, a raise, that's about a half a million dollars. And I figured out the health insurance, and I'm talking just general fund. This is not all the other budgets. So everybody outside the, I'm just strictly talking the budget, general budget, because all the twelve cents is going to the general budget. And our health insurance is going up about three hundred and eighty thousand. And so, I mean, and I understand inflation. I know things have gone up and we've had, and I've sat here and I've voted to raise. The deputies and I've, I've sat here and I've voted to the paramedics, but I've also totaled up that we've amended the budget eight million dollars this year. So we've, in my view, and I'm guilty of it, you know, and so I'm struggling if I'm going to vote for it. And if I do vote for it, I'm not going to vote for any more amendments next year, because that's where we get in trouble. We amend the budget and this is when I was over here, the first time we amended the budget and then every year we were trying to figure out how to pay for it. And I'm, and you've done a great job and this is not, you know, nothing towards you. It's just a personal struggle that I'm having. And I would like to have some of those conversations on the adequacy of these tax. I know when we passed it, it took two-thirds majority of this commission to increase it. And I don't know, the walls have changed since then. I don't know if we can still increase that, but I would, I would support that, even though I'm in the building field. I supported it last time and I got a lot of, well, took a lot of stuff over that, over that. But also, you know, what other options do we have? And I would like to at least discuss those. And I understand, I know you've got the spreadsheet set out for the fund balance. And I understand on the capital outlay. That as far as kicking the can, and I don't want to rob every year and be over here robbing two and three million dollars. I know where that's going to end up. I mean, so if we need to. If there's no other option and we've explored those, then I'll support it. But you know, if we can go two years without raising taxes, then hey, that's two years that nobody had to pay the increase. And I guess the problem I'm getting is, you know, and I'm getting hounded by about four or five people and they're people that I respect that are, are, that I respect in this community, they're business people. And they're like, hey, you know, our property tax, and this is a bad year because of the reappraisal, you know, and so the people that's getting. A tax, I guess their appraisal has went up over the, I guess the average is going to get, they're going to get taxed anyway. So I think the average was fifty-two percent, forty-eight or fifty-two, I think, the reappraisal. Not sure. Forty, forty, fifty-four. And so I've got people calling me saying, hey, mine's went up a hundred percent. So I was like, yeah, you're going to get a tax increase, because your value went up more than the average, you know. And so those are just things, and it's not, and it's, you know, I, if there's a way we could spend thirty minutes or an hour and discuss what options would be available. If we knock two cents off or if we knock five cents off, I mean, I would like to see, I would like to see some thoughts in it. Maybe it can't be, maybe it can be. That's just my thoughts on it.
Any other comments?
Mayor, you, you said the state said we can't add an impact fee, right?
Excuse me?
We cannot add an impact fee, correct?
They have it, what do you call it? Captive, they stopped it. It's, we are where you are right now. They're pushing the legislature up and back up. The counties, it's really killing us, the growth counties, Murray, Rutherford, Williamson to some extent, but state legislature would allow it.
So we can't increase?
We're not sure. That's open for debate, because we, sometime we're told we're grandfathered in, sometime we're not. So the deal is, if you move it from a dollar to two dollars, you're probably talking about a half million more dollars at the most on revenue.
Let's see, what is the wheel, what's the wheel tax if we go up?
I think the public rent room, it's been at sixty dollars for quite some time. Think a tag is at eighty-nine dollars, sixty dollars for wheel tax and twenty-nine to the state.
Do we know what the dollar amount is? If you go up a dollar, how much are we generating? No, it's, I mean, I'm just, you know.
There's a wheel tax guy going to refer in. Does it got to be voted on to raise?
I think so.
I believe so. I'm not certain of that, but I think so.
I wish, I mean, I'm, I'm a, I'm a wheel tax guy, because everybody's got a car that rents a house or an apartment. So I mean, I'd double wheel tax while raising like property tax, you know. But I think it's got to go on the ballot.
Any other questions, comments?
Mayor, I know you got a hard job and we're here to be behind you. And making decisions like this is, is hard. And I guess it kind of boils down to what I've seen, especially in the last couple of years. It seems like Dixon County must be a valuable county to outsiders. And these outsiders have money. I mean, they get on the internet and pull up properties here in the county and find a nice place, several acres. They say, hey, man, I can buy that for that right there. I can sell mine for twice that. So that's probably your problem. That's what you got to look at. And we can't be blamed for that. And the mayor can't be blamed for that. And Ms. Jenny can't be blamed for that. I know she's took a lot, a lot. So, you know, we can say things, but we can't do nothing about it. When you got, when you got, when you got people that's, that's got money, I'm not, I'm one that don't. And I, you know, I'm not ashamed to say that, but there's a lot of people that just got money. And they, they don't mind spending it. And people like us suffer, I know where you at.
Well, I'm blessed. I mean, I got more than I deserve, right? Where I've been forward in everything, okay? And you know, and it's something I was afraid that I was going to say, and I was going to ask you, but Dick Lengel, okay, had one, two people, one above come over there and they met with him, okay? They're talking about lowering their taxes right off the bat. How can you do that and not discriminate against other people in the camp? Now, to me, that's opening up a can of worms. Now, maybe that's not the true truth of it or whatever, but there's several people who's come and said, hey, God, they're going to get their taxes lowered, why can't I get mine both? So, so where are we at on that? I mean, is that the case or is it, is it by each one of them's, you know, their own deal? I mean, can they get it lowered like this?
There's a two-week window open for the Board of Equalization for you to come forward and show your tax card and make your case to it. And that, it was a two-week window, Ms. Martin, and that went on. You talked to quite a number of people on that. And if they made their case that their property wasn't as assessed, that board made adjustments. So there's a five-member board, four from Dixon County and one from the city of Dixon on that. So it's available every year, I guess, when you get a new tax card.
Well, is it possible that everybody could go over there and make?
Well, that window's open and closed. It was, it's advertised every year, so that, that ended a week ago, I believe.
All these pictures that they were busy, they've been busy for three weeks, every day. So I mean, I, I'm just, somebody called me and asked me, I mean, I don't know what to tell them, you know. I mean, is it, is it a form of discrimination against other people?
It's state law. I'm not sure how it works. And I'll miss Martin's final elected official and probably explain to you sometime how it works. So, but that window's open and closed where you can come do that.
They still build the state if they, if they didn't do. The county board is adjourned, but they can take their appeal to the state.
Yeah, I think one of them did, and I think it's probably some kind of reform out for the states, what and everything, but they, they, see, you hear everything. I mean, you know, the person up there, the state said one day, and then you come back and, and you know, people, they still, I don't know where it is.
Is that part of the base of income?
No, not this, not the, what goes on with border equalization. That's purely on your, on your property bay.
Mayor, how, how long, when was the last increase?
Five years ago.
And before that?
I think it was at least five years before that, because in two thousand thirteen, we lowered the property tax. Nobody remembers that one. I do. So it's been, we're net, with this, we'll be up to net in fourteen years. Three increases, one decrease.
This increase, do you see it? Holding things good for several years?
At this point, kind of understanding the trends we see, and I think Mr. Hall agree, I don't see, there will be another time that I'm mayor that will be raising property taxes. And frankly, I probably hear another four to five years away, assuming the growth patterns that stay stable we've had in this county.
Don, what is our total debt?
About seventy-four million dollars.
What?
Seventy-four million. And the controller's office shows us is excellent on debt. You take, you do your debt measure, measurement on the, on the assessed values of all property in the county. We're at about three percent of assessed values in the county. So we get a little green star from the controller on that. They don't need to be any more than eight percent and we're at three.
I'm ready to make a motion and I'd like for a roll call to see where we stand with everybody to approve the budget as it is.
Motion by Commissioner Grove to approve the first resolution. I have a second. Please, please, voice, Commissioner Brett. Madam Carter, call the roll, please.
Hi.
Mr. McElwain. Mr. Beatty. Mr. Dawson. Ms. Spicer. Mr. Buckner. Mr. Britt. Mr. Petty. Mr. Williams. Mr. Grove.
Thank you. Resolution passes. Next resolution, resolution making approach, I'm sorry, pull one page out. I don't seem to have that page. You have the page that is on. Well, I'll just read off the agenda then. Set tax rate tax levy. Do y'all have, for some reason, it's not in my packet, that resolution? Mr. Hall, do you have that? Nobody. Who does that? Resolution fixing tax leave in Dixon County, Tennessee for the year beginning July first. How do you make this go down? Okay. It's the dollar sixty-nine tax rate, general fund ninety-nine cent, highway five cents, general purpose schools forty-nine cents, general debt service sixteen cents for a dollar sixty-nine. That's all that's on that, by the way, to set that. That's the money it takes to, to pa, to, uh, fund the budget that was just approved. Up on the floor for a motion.
Motion approved.
Motion by Commissioner Simpkins. Have a second. Second by Commissioner Ledger. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of upstanding aye? Opposed? Madam Clerk, take the roll.
Mr. Stewart-Simpkins. Mr. Ledger. Mr. McElwain. Mr. Beatty. Mr. Dawson. Ms. Spicer. Mr. Buckner. Mr. Britt. Mr. Petty. Mr. Williams. Mr. Grove.
Next time, resolution making appropriations to nonprofit charitable organizations. Do y'all have that one in your packet? We're in section five point nine dash one oh nine TCA authorized Dixon County legislative body to make appropriations various nonprofit charitable organizations, whereas the Dixon County legislative body recognized the various nonprofit charitable organizations providing services in Dixon County have a great, have great needs of funds to carry on their nonprofit charitable work. Now, therefore, it being resolved by the Board of County Commissioners in Dixon County on this twenty-fourth day of June two thousand twenty-four, section one, five hundred seventy thousand, one hundred twenty-eight dollars be approved to nonprofit organizations in Dixon County, Tennessee, as reflected below. City or town festivals, three thousand dollars. Mid Cumberland Human Resource Agency, ten thousand dollars. Fire service, two hundred ninety-one thousand, eighty dollars. Help center, five thousand dollars. Island Rim, five thousand dollars. Rescue squad, fifty-four thousand, forty-eight dollars. Aided the dependent children, four thousand dollars. Senior citizens center, twenty thousand dollars. Airport authority, twenty-five thousand dollars. Humane Society, a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Be it further resolved that all appropriations enumerated in section one above are subject to following conditions, that the nonprofit organization which the funds are appropriated shall file with the county clerk and dispersing officials a county of the annual report of its business affairs and transactions to propose use of county funds in accordance with the rules promulgated by the Controller of the Treasury, chapter oh three eight oh dash two dash seven. Such annual report shall be prepared and certified by the chief financial officer of such nonprofit organization in accordance with section five point nine point one oh nine TCA. That said, funds must only be used by the name nonprofit charitable organization by furtherance of their nonprofit charitable purposes benefiting the general welfare of the residents of Dixon. That is expressed interest of the county commission of Dixon County in providing these funds to the above named nonprofit charitable organizations to be fully in compliance with chapter oh three eight oh dash two dash seven of the rules of the Controller of the Treasury, section five dash nine dash one oh nine TCA, and any and all other laws which may apply to county appropriations is made subject to compliance with any of all these laws and regulations. Be it further resolved, this resolution shall be, shall take effect from, from and after its passage by the provisions shall be enforced from July first, two thousand twenty-four. This resolution shall be spread upon the minutes of Board of County Commissioners, Pat, on this day, uh, twenty-fourth day of June, two thousand twenty-four. Be glad to share this with anybody that wants to say it. Basically, same as what we've done years before. Pretty much the same on that. It's an increase for, um, increase for, um, the, uh, thank you, the, uh, fire departments. We built in an increase for them.
I was trying to keep up with you, Mayor. You can read pretty good. Um, the Mid Cumberland, the only question I've got, that, the Mid Cumberland is giving ten thousand, is the help center five thousand? I, I, I don't know, but I know we got that opioid money that we've not spent, we're not all paid out. Is there any way to take our opioid money, give the Mid Cumberland out of that and put the ten thousand to the help center, help the people?
Don't disagree with you on that, uh, especially when you look at how much we're getting Humane Society, but we won't get into that right now. Uh, we are giving them five thousand, but as you recall, in the budget, we're also giving the, the help center a hundred thousand dollars to help build their, uh, endowment fund. So in essence, we're giving them a hundred and five thousand dollars, but that came straight out of general fund on an amendment. So, and we're going to continue to do that for at least the next, well, I'm gonna recommend next three years, but, but we're hoping the next five years till they get to a million dollars in their.
And we still got the opioid money for Mid Cumberland, right, that we can't get rid of?
It's, yeah, there's some of that, but the rules on that have to be spent in such a way, they have a long application of what they have to do on the opioid money. You may recall, we did that, I think, back in April, where, uh, Child FC Center, uh, the twenty-third judicial court and Mid Cumberland, uh, were given money because there are specific programs they have to apply for and qualify. We just can't hand the money over. They have to come, develop a pro, program that follows sort of the federal law, the guidelines that they gave on that. So I, I agree with Commissioner. We have extra funding. I think we ought to take a look at that as the year goes on. Well, that's being passed around. Do y'all have all, any other resolutions? Are they sent to y'all? I mean, the next one I've got up here is about the, um, it's gonna be the amendments. Y'all have all those? Okay. That's been passed around. I'll look on the floor for a motion. Appropriations to nonprofit organizations. Motion by Commissioner Grove, second by Commissioner Ledger. Any questions or discussions? Hearing none. All in favor of upstanding aye? Opposed? Thank you. Amendments, all funds except schools, Mr. Hall.
You should now have all the amendments for the, uh, general operations side, our side, since Friday, and some small ones I handed you out tonight. So this will take care of all the business. Do you have any questions? I don't, I didn't get any emails from anyone or any phone calls, but if you sat there and looked through some of them, if you got any questions, I'll answer them for you. Does anybody have a question on any amendments?
Was this spending any additional funds or is this just cleaning up line items?
That's just cleaning up line items.
Thank you.
Payrolls, that type thing. Yeah.
Any questions for Mr. Hall? Up on the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner McElwain, second by Commissioner Beatty. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of upstanding aye? Opposed? Thank you. Item number five, quarterly financial reports, Mr. Hall.
Yeah, the third quarter financial reports here, this falls in line with the amendments, basically what we talked about a few weeks ago. Uh, anything that looked out of line there was taken care of in the amendments are brought, brought into line. So I haven't heard anything on the quarterly reports also, but that covers all the quarterly reports on our side also. So it's basically just status quo with that.
Any questions for Mr. Hall? Up on the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Beatty. Second by Commissioner Britt. Hearing other questions. All in favor of upstanding aye? Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Amendments, all school funds, Board of Education representative, Dr. Sutherland.
Thank you, Commissioners. You have a clean copy. Everyone was sent a clean copy of the amendments that were sent and a page descriptor of that. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Dr. Sutherland? On this, are you spending more funds or just a line item movement?
We did not spend any more funds.
Thank you. Up on the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Petty. Second by Commissioner Burton, uh, Beatty. Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor of upstanding aye? Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Sutherland. Item number seven, Fagan Chapel Road, Loggins Road, The Limit, Commissioner Simpkins.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, I had requested, the numbers looked a little odd, so, uh, we're gonna run a retest. We might have that done by, I think we'd be able to get it on next month's budget, a budget, agenda, sorry.
No slip there. July fifteenth, where it comes early, like this next meeting. It's three weeks from today.
Yeah, I think we got one survey that finishes up next week, so, uh, logins will, should be on there, Mayor.
Yeah, we'll move it to July fifteenth. There's no objection. Is that okay, Commissioner Simpkins?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Number, item number eight, on-premise consultation referendum, Commissioner Williams.
So this was a request, uh, for somebody in, in District Ten to, um, to be able to open up a restaurant and serve liquor by the drink. So I guess would put it, this is, this votes to put it on the referendum in November. Is that correct? That's in November, the general election?
It'd be on the November fifth ballot. It does require two thirds of the bottom.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Williams. Have a second. Second by, is that, I'm sorry, thank Commissioner Grove. Any questions or discussion?
It's, um, actually, if you know where Cajun Lake is beside Catfish Kitchen.
Yeah.
That is, um, uh, they have a event center there, I think. Planning on going to a restaurant.
Want to make everyone aware, the, again, you know, we voted this once, so this will, it's put on the referendum for the voter to decide if you'd have liquor by the drink anywhere in unincorporated Dixon County. So that was the request, but I know there's other restaurants, uh, a couple already that have mentioned they would, they will follow suit on this. Had a motion by, um, Commissioner Williams. I don't, did I get a second? Thank you, Mr. Grove. All right. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of upstanding aye? Opposed? Thank you. Uh, item number nine, uh, write-off uncollectible transactions, uh, Ms. Greer.
Yes, sir. That's, we're required by the state audits, our, right off, and we're writing off one hundred ninety dollars in fees. We have to do that, and then to clear my bills.
Have a motion. Motion by Commissioner McElwain, second by Commissioner Spicer. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of upstanding aye? Opposed? Thank you. Item number ten, Sheriff Department Air Sanitation System, Sheriff Eads.
Yes, this is, uh, I met with the county attorney, a little bit different than my recommendation, but it's a lot lower. Uh, initially, we thought we were going to need, uh, about thirteen thousand dollars, uh, to complete this project. This is an air sanitation project that will, uh, impact the entire, uh, HVAC of the jail and the admin office. And we have a, a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollar grant from the Tennessee Department of Health. Uh, this is an air sanitation system, so it kills COVID, flu, straight up a whole host of pathogens. And, uh, I believe it will, uh, help. It's technology they use in like a lot of operating rooms and hospitals. And, uh, uh, we, we have this grant and, uh, as soon as we do the project, it's just, it's a reimbursement grant. We'll show where we pay for it and the state will send us the money. So I think a pretty quick turnaround, uh, so, but we would need five hundred dollars out of the general fund, uh, to complete the project.
Thanks, Sheriff. Any questions for Sheriff?
Yeah, let's see. The total project price is a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, forty dollars, and the grants, a hundred and seventy-six dollars and some change. We could five hundred dollars short on the grant, so.
Let's just pass the hat. We get it done.
Okay, have a bank sale there.
Don't touch the budget. I need a motion on that. Motion by Commissioner Spicer, second by Commissioner McElwain. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of upstanding aye? Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item number eleven is resolution abolish the office of constable in Dixon County, Tennessee at the end of the current term of office. Uh, this has to be voted on twice. It passed last month. Needs to be voted on again. Motion by Commissioner Grove to have a second. Second by Commissioner Britt. All in favor of upstanding aye? Opposed? Thank you. Item number twelve, amendment to Article Five, Section five point oh four two, R one residential district E dimensional regulations by adding number nine driveway standards. Uh, we have Mr. Darnell here tonight. Any questions for Mr. Darnell? This is the, this passed a month ago, so this is the official reading that'll take effect after tonight. Up on the floor for a motion. I'm sorry.
Give me another, one more explanation.
Yeah, this is the R one. Uh, we go for three different R presidential zones. Uh, they're all half acre or less. This will have the driveway paved completely from the road to the primary structure.
And to remind you, there was one for agricultural, but it was taken out and it is not on tonight's agenda, but this is residential.
This is, did you say all the way?
Yeah, these, you're talking lots that are so small, but it's like you could go out there today, but if you see them, they're on A one. They're, they're paved all the way from the road to the house. It's not a great distance. This will put all the residential zones aside.
But along with, I guess, the clarification would need. That is, uh, that's the only clue with the home that you can, or.
Not the A one. This is just the residential districts, and we don't have that many of them.
I'll make that move.
Thank you, Commissioner Simpkins. Have a second. Second by Commissioner Grove. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in vote, all in favor of, vote by stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Uh, item thirteen, amendment to Article Five to add section five point oh five oh notice of zone change applications. Mr. Darnell?
What this is, we had a public hearing last month. This will be an actual thing where whoever wants to do a zone change, they will also have to mail out a certified, a trade receipt to all the, uh, surrounding neighbors, boarding brokers.
Up on the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Petty, second by Commissioner Williams. Any question or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of upstanding aye? Opposed? Thank you. Item number fourteen, amendment to Article Three, Section three point one one oh landscaping buffer requirements. amend Article Two, Section two point oh two by adding the definition of native plants. B, amend the zoning resolution to appendix one, approve native plants, Tennessee. C, amend zoning resolution to appendix two, prohibited invasive plants. Mr. Darnell?
This is about the same thing we had a public hearing on last month. Basically, you had the definition of what it is. Also, you had the charts that tells you what plants are allowed, which ones you cannot plant, especially if you're doing a site.
Any questions, Mr. Darnell?
So that would pertain to residential or commercial business?
Your site plans are gonna be your commercial. You don't have site plans on your residential.
Okay, so it'd be commercial.
But it will give you a list of what, you know, what is invasive and what is not.
Thank you. Up on the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Ledger, second by Commissioner Petty. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of upstanding aye? Opposed? Thank you. Item number fifteen, R three residential district revisions. Mr. Darnell?
This is what I said in public hearing on last month. This was the final changes that were suggested by this body and it's up for final vote tonight.
Any question, Mr. Darnell? Up on the floor for a motion. Thank you, Commissioner Butler. Second. I need it. Let me go and get a second. I got my Commissioner Butler.
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Simpkins.
Now, this is a district division of what, uh, is, is that the driveway extension of the twenty-foot?
This is changed up by the R three and one.
Oh, you're talking about the, the tracks, the tracks of land. It's the house sets off.
Any other question, Mr. Darnell? Have a motion and second. All in favor of upstanding aye? Opposed? Thank you. Item number six on the agenda, other business, C T oh two five three, Mr. Hall.
Yeah, this right here is where we borrowed some money on the capital outlay note. There's two of them. One's ambulance for two hundred ninety-five thousand and the other's driveway paving machine, four hundred sixty-six thousand and fifty-seven dollars. We got a proposal from you guys to do that. This here is saying that we have completed that transaction for both of these.
Those are the budget year that we're in right now, and so the borrowing is just now being done on that.
Yeah. It's complete.
That's just for notification purposes. It doesn't require a vote. That's just for notification purposes. It doesn't require a vote. Uh, item number seven, approval of notaries, Madam Clerk.
Candace Baldwin, Cody Bruington, Joseph Cuthrin, Elizabeth Duke, Pamela Edwards, Mary Eubank, Jennifer Foster, Barbara Fuller, Betty Grigsby, Kalissa Hafner, Tammy Kilgore, Angela Mayberry, Tabitha Ritchie, Wayne Sinse, Wanda Sinse, and Kelly Jackson Smith.
Up on the floor for motion. Thank Commissioner Petty, second by Commissioner McElwain. All in favor of vote stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. That's going to be the end of this meeting. I'll announce that, but we're about to have July's work session follow up directly here. Uh, any other questions or other business that anybody would like to bring up? Okay, we're going to adjourn this meeting. I'll do that thing I always do, and then we're going to call to order the July work session. As you recall, we're not having a work session on July first. We're having it right now and we'll be back on July fifteenth. Well, final announcement of this meeting is next regular session meeting will be on Monday, July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four at seven P M. In the Beaufortale Biddy Reed Junior County Commission Chamber of the Dixie County Administration Building Four Court, Sheriff, Charlotte, Tennessee. Have a motion, second adjourned. Thank you. Want to call to order the work session for July of, hopefully somebody has an agenda for that too, because I don't seem to have one. Thank you. Y'all have an agenda for that? How about y'all? Who else needs one? Y'all need one? All good? Okay. You know, I've given up on that today. Okay, we called to order the county commission work session for July. Uh, we've already done, we called to order prayer, pledge, and the roll call. Nobody's left, so we got all eleven here. First order business, approval of the minutes, uh, from the June third meeting. Have a motion, second to that. Thank you, Commissioner McElwain. Thank you, Commissioner Butler. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Uh, committee reports, uh, imagine we don't have one. We didn't have one earlier. Uh, appointments, got down regional solid waste board, but nobody gave me a name. So, uh, we'll push that till, uh, August meeting. Uh, new business first is Wildcat Road Speed Limit, Commissioner Ledger.
I'm going to defer to, to Sheriff.
All right. Uh, so Commissioner, uh, Ledger asked to do a, uh, speed analysis survey, uh, have the results for Wildcats. Current speed limit's forty-five, uh, again, over a period of six days, uh, one thousand six hundred ninety-eight vehicles. That's a dead end road. Uh, I hadn't had a chance to count how many. I know there's several houses out there. Uh, we have a fellow that, this, as far as the forty-five mile an hour speed, we didn't have a lot of speeders, seven and six. Uh, have y'all getting used to me saying the eighty-fifth percentile is twenty-three in one direction, twenty-three in the other. It's usually one or two off. Uh, I, I would like by the next, I know this is just work session to get it on there. So I, I would like to, uh, to, to get a house count before I make a final, uh, recommendation on there, but, uh, you know.
Would July fifteenth be fine or do you need?
Yeah, no, July fifteenth is fine.
Okay. Is that okay, Commissioner Ledger? All right. That's motion by Ledger to have a second. Second by McElwain. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Item number two, uh, High Lake Drive Speed Limit, Commissioner Williams.
I'll let the sheriff go over that. I, I did not have a chance to talk to Mr. Hodges about the stop signs, but if we could do the speed limit, then maybe talk to him about the stop signs as well.
Okay. Uh, so this was also, this is a, uh, completely a, does not have any characteristics of a county road. Uh, it's a subdivision out past, uh, uh, the highway department, if y'all familiar. And, uh, it has a, I think, a unofficial fifteen mile an hour posted speed limit, but I don't think this body has ever voted on that that I'm aware of. Uh, so that would default it to forty-five. Uh, the maximum speed recorded, uh, over a seven day, thirty-nine minute period, two thousand seven hundred ninety-six vehicles. That's a lot of vehicles for that number of houses. It is about what, Mr. Williams, about thirty something houses? About thirty houses. And it, it's really not a cut through. It, it comes off Silvis and makes a big loop. Uh, the eighty-fifth percentile speed was twenty in one direction and eighteen in the other. So I think having a, uh, an official lower speed limit's not going to hurt anything or kill anybody because, uh, there's just, you know, it's, it's, it's a subdivision and, uh, there is a, uh, there is a spot. Talk to Mr. Hodges a little bit, possibly, uh, to curb some of the speeding. Uh, it, it's almost a natural three-way stop, and I think, Commissioner Williams, you were going to reach back out to the resident.
Yeah, I did. So the HOA president had reached out to me, but, and I called, after you gave me the report, I called and left her a message. She hasn't responded. So I guess I would, are you good with the three-way stop or, or what?
Good. It's your HOA president. I think she's excellent.
Okay, that's what I didn't hear. Okay, okay.
So wasn't anything, I think, uh, right, uh, direct hodge, other than just some signage. There's no, yes, that no road work needs to be done, so. But it would, it would sort of put a natural calming effect, because that's right in that long stretch that goes up into the subdivision. It's about halfway up. And, uh, you know, it might curb it a little bit, like say it's, it's not, not crazy out there, but the, the, you know, eighty-five percent of the people are doing around twenty, eighteen to twenty miles an hour.
So you recommending a fifteen or a twenty? What, what?
I would recommend staying as close to eighty-fifth. That's what we, that's usually my, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I'm just by happenstance done a lot of this. Typically, that's what you shoot for. It's a safe speed limit. I, being a purely residential neighborhood, I think twenty would be an appropriate, uh, speed limit.
Okay. And I'm not going to be here on the fifteenth, so can, uh, I guess, I know, uh, actually, Mr. Reagan's partner, Mr. Reynolds, is their attorney for that HOA. I guess I'd like to at least run that by somebody there about the speed limit and the three, the three-way stop sign if I could.
Sure.
And if it's okay, I'd like just to send an email maybe, since I'm not going to be here if.
Yeah, and I can forward this report to, uh, Mr. Reynolds.
Okay. It's a county, yeah.
Yes, sir.
So a few bases for some of this, I had a thought to share.
Yeah.
I think I asked them to put on the agenda.
Yeah, survey started today. It's on there, Commissioner Beatty. It, it, it may be ready to be. Okay, I, I should have it by there. We typically shoot for a seven day study. So when it went up today, uh, my guy goes and drops a pin for a post location and then Jackie's guys go out there and put a post up so we can now survey. So it's, it's, uh.
Are we prepared to, or do we have the ability to enforce these laws? Do we have radar?
Yes, sir.
In our units before we can enforce them? Because, I mean, you know, we can redo all the speed limits there is, and if we don't enforce them.
No.
You know, then it's a mute point.
Yeah, yeah. We, we have a spreadsheet for road deputies and typically our grant funding just ran out for overtime. We typically get about twenty thousand dollars a year from the Tennessee Highway Safety, uh.
Because I'm getting several people, you know, East Piney Road.
Yeah, that's the number one.
Piney Road. Yeah. I mean, you know, everybody wants the speed limit lowered, but, you know, if we're not going, if we can't enforce it, then, you know, uh, they put up new signs out there four, five months ago, uh, on East Piney, and it slowed it down for just a little bit, but the majority of, uh, huge part of our traffic is coming out Hickman County, coming through there to come to Dixon, and they don't know what slow down means. Uh, I mean.
They're so bad, they can't speed.
Well, that's, that's true, because when you come off a bump in the ridge back there, it's like riding on a washboard and.
Speed on my road, you will wreck.
But it's, it, I mean, you know, when, when they hit East Piney Road, buddy, I mean, it's gas down and go. And I pull out from my house, there's a good, uh, eight hundred thousand feet from my house that you can see down the road. And before I can get on the road, they're eating my bumper up. I mean, you know, it's, it's dangerous, but. Like I said, if we, if we can't enforce it, then it, it don't do a bit of good to change these speed limits.
We, we do what we can. Like I said, we have a.
I understand, but if we're not able to do it, then it's, it's a mute point.
Thanks. Uh, item number two, we never voted on. What, what were we doing on Highland Lake Drive Speed Limit?
So I think, sorry. Yeah, so I guess to make a motion to forward it on the fifteenth, I won't be here, but I would like to forward it there. And then I wanted to reach out to the HOA, I guess, new president, and if I could send an email out to the sheriff and after, after we discuss, maybe Mr. Hodges and get it, get it okay, I guess, that they're, I mean, because the HOA is the one that reached out to me about, about doing this, so.
We're good with that.
All right. That's a motion by Williams to be this July fifteenth. Have a second. Second by Grove. All in favor of vote stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Uh, we've added number three, uh, which Timber Ridge.
What, I, you know, the, the deal on the orders, what you, what you trying to?
Uh, we're still working on it, uh, on that noise.
Do we have, do we have any orders?
Uh, it's, there's some state law about disturbing the peace, but the DA's, it's usually got to be something extreme.
I would be good, maybe look at that, having some mortgages every time we had to do it. Then two cases, one of them about music, you know, and a bunch of boys shooting off the gun at night about ten o'clock. So, uh, if we could look into that, maybe go study on whatever it is, what it can.
Big, I know Mr. Reagan's done some work on that before, and I'm sure he'd be happy to do it again, because it's a bill is twice that way. He wouldn't pay attention to me. Very good. Thank you, Sheriff. Uh, before we get to other business on this, Mr. Darnell, will you be adding anything to the July fifteenth agenda? Is there things coming that we've already looked at on planning this own?
There's a public hearing coming up for the rezoning request, so I added up information.
Well, it's looking a way where we wouldn't have to have a July fifteenth meeting where all this could be moved down. What's the public hearing for?
Uh, the rezoning for Paul. The ladies are there on Sunday.
So the only business we'll have before us then is the, uh, uh, Wildcat Highland and the public hearing. Okay, yeah. So that public hearing, I'm kind of familiar with the property. Any way to delay it?
I can talk to her, but they're trying to, they're wanting to push it and stuff.
We have to make that decision right now, so we'll go. I'm just trying to find a way not have July meetings, because really, most of these things could wait till August, but, uh, we'll go forward with it. Uh,
We had to post it. It's in the paper. It'd be thirty day notice.
Bill. All right, that takes care of that. On yours, Commissioner Beatty from Timber Ridge, whenever on that. That's a motion by Beatty to that Timber Ridge to have a second. Second by McElwain. All in favor of vote stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Any other business from commissioners? Announcement, next work session meeting will be on August fifth at seven P M. Wait a second, was something very dangerous almost happened. Mr. Petty? Do you, is there something you need to talk to us about? What, what happened? I think, do you have a birthday? No, we're talking, we're talking about it here. Do you, do you have a birthday coming up? And you were going to report?
No.
So you want us to sing at the next meeting?
The holiday is my birthday, but I'm saying.
Well, with your lack of enthusiasm, we will sing on July fifteenth. So we will be having a meeting July fifteenth. So, thank you. So the next workstation meeting will be on August fifth, the, the two thousand twenty-four at seven P M. In the Beaufortale Biddy Reed Junior County Commission Chamber of the Dixie County Administration Building Four Court, Sheriff, Charlotte, Tennessee. Have a motion, second adjourned. Thank you.